Good evening, Bellingham. Today is September sixteenth, twenty twenty four, six thirty P M. And we are going to open our meeting, and if you can join us for the pleasure of it.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands on the nation of God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we got an exciting thing on the agenda this evening. And before we get going with everything, and I, if you allow me, I would like to actually say something on a personal, personal note. We always talk about our Bellingham Police and Fire Department. And I would like to extend my gratitude to Bellingham Police, especially Bellingham Fire. And we, we have, I'm really thankful as well as my family, and the reason why actually, you know, it's, I'm standing here tonight. And whatever the call, they made it at that night, and then came by, saved my life. And I'm so thankful. And that being said, let's get moving. The first one is on the agenda, load on Stormwater Asset Management Plan Optimization. It's Jesse.
There's nothing really, the letter speaks to it, it's just authorized, we need a signed grant or what, so.
I'll make, I move that the select board authorized the town administrator on behalf of the town Bellingham to enter into agreement with the state of, with the state for the Stormwater Asset Management Plan AMP financing application.
Second.
We got first, we got second, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
You know, both? None. I vote. And then the next one is that.
Good award for the senior center kitchen equipment. We've got some great numbers, so.
Yeah. Perfect, thanks, Tim.
Chairman. I'll make a motion to move that the contract two oh two fourth dash S C K E, senior center kitchen equipment be awarded to the low bidder North Shore Wholesale Marketplace of Piedade, Mass. Be ordering with the equipment to be placed after Mr. Ricardi's great friends.
We got first, we got second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
You vote? None, perfect, I vote. That's great work. Thank you so much all around. And, and the next one is going to be our town council interviews. And we would like to thank you, thanks for joining us tonight. The way, I'm assuming Hillary explained that to you, so we're going to give you half an hour, and you can do your presentation, and then, and then if you have any room, if anybody have a question. If you allow us, we'll be happy to do that. But if not, we'll get that going. I think the first one is Harrington Heath. L P. Pleasure to have you. Hello, everyone. Hello.
I thank you guys so much. We brought copies of our proposal. Do you have them, or would you appreciate? Yeah.
You don't mind though. The one without audience, since we do have, we do have two in the fires. Thank you.
Thanks so much. So, we're Harrington Heath, we really appreciate the opportunity to meet with you guys tonight. My name's Evria Fried, I'm a partner at Harrington Heath. And I'm proposed as the lead counsel on the response. I think the way we like to, to, you know, kind of run these is to give kind of a five minute, ten minute overview of our firm and kind of how we envision the relationship between the community and our firm, and then kind of open it up to questions. That's really the best way, we think, for you to learn who we are and to see if we would be a good fit working together. So I'll start and then from there. Like I said, I'm Evria Fried, with me today is Chris Heath, partner at our firm, and Ryan Holmquist, who's an associate. I've been practicing municipal law for ten years, and I'm currently a lead counsel to the town of, lead general town council to the towns of Reading and Lancaster. And I'm backup town council in Wellesley and in Littleton. I'm also the president of the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association, which is our bar association for municipal attorneys in the Commonwealth, and I'm the liaison with the Massachusetts Municipal Association, I work with the MMA in that role. And I also serve on editorial board for the fourth edition of Town Meeting Time, so I work with the Moderators Association in that capacity as well. And before I go into like the firm spiel, I'm going to let them do like quick introductions, and then I'll, I'll take back over.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for, for having us here to present. Really appreciate the opportunity. If you can't hear me, let me know, and I'll, I'll speak up. But I'm Ryan Holmquist, I'm proposed as backup counsel. I've been at Harrington Heath for four years, and prior to that, I spent two years at Lomerville. I practice in the area of general municipal law, so we create town meeting, Community Preservation Act, Open Meeting Law, Public Records Act. All that sort of good stuff that comes up day to day. I'm also a member of the firm's procurement and contracts team. So. Oh, and I'm also the current backup counsel to the town of Templeton. I'll turn it to Chris.
And hello, everyone. Nice to meet you all. I'm Chris Heath. I've been with the firm since two thousand and five. I joined the firm after a year of working for the now Chief Justice of the Massachusetts Land Court. And I've been with the firm ever since then, when I, when I joined in two thousand and five, doing more or less exclusively municipal law that whole time. I currently serve as town council in Needham, backup town council in Grafton. And I also am lead of the firm's land use and zoning practice group. So I sort of split my time roughly equally between doing general town council stuff with, for those two towns, and land use zoning subdivision wetlands, land use litigation in pretty much all of the towns that we work. So I do both of those things at the same time.
So this is sort of the team that you would see a lot. You'd work with Ryan and I as, as lead and backup, and then Chris would come in a lot of times on the land use matters. So Harrington Heath is a municipal law firm, that's what we do, that's who we are at our core. We've been around since nineteen eighty eight. And since then, we've only done municipal law. We really do believe in good governance and helping communities achieve what they set out to achieve. Our firm has twelve attorneys and two support staff. We represent fifteen communities as general town council, and we are labor council in seven cities and towns. In addition, we represent numerous communities and public agencies throughout the Commonwealth. And I think it's really important to recognize that ratio. We're not too big, but we're also not too small. It's a good balance, and it allows us to provide timely and responsive answers to your questions, something we really pride ourselves on. And as I noted, our core focus is municipal law. We do it all. I have a strong background in open meeting law, public records law, state ethics law. I do a lot of work with town meeting, warrant preparation, election work. Ryan is part of our procurement and contracting team, we do land use. I'm also in our finance, our municipal finance group, so we really do everything that you would encounter as a community. We also encourage our attorneys to participate in their communities, and many of them do. I served on our conservation commission, Chris is on our zoning, is on his zoning board. We have a member who's on their planning board, elected planning board member, we have a finance committee member, so we see it from both sides. I think that's really important. We're not just attorneys, we're also public servants, so we, we know what type of advice community members want to receive because we are sitting in your seats as well. And I think when you are interviewing tonight, because you're going to meet four firms, I think what's really important is to understand how we are different, how is Harrington Heath different, and why we are best for you? Why can we serve Bellington, Bellingham best? Because really, every one of these firms practices in these areas of law, and all of the attorneys, most of them try to participate in some form in their community. So it's really the question before you is, why are we the best fit? And I think it really truly does come down to our responsiveness and the, our ability to provide individualized attention. And that's really the core of how we like to practice municipal law. As the lead, I will be the Bellingham expert. Everything will come through me, and I will make sure that I understand the ins and outs of this community and what your needs are. And it's important for me to understand what's going on with your coms com, and what's going on with your fin com, and be able to kind of understand how all the bodies interact. And that's my job as lead, and Ryan's job to some extent as backup. If you get an attorney who's never met with you before, and they may look at it kind of in a myopic way, and that's really our goal, is, is not to do that. You won't get lost in the pile. And that all comes back to maintaining our ratios and being able to provide responsive advice. So personally, when I get an email, I always respond within the same business day. If I can't provide substantive response, what I like to do is say, okay, when do you need this advice? So that I understand what the deadlines are, and that I can meet that, that goal for you. But you won't send an email, and it won't just sit in a, in an inbox. That's not how we operate. You will have my cellphone. I recognize this is not a nine to five job. So you have a hearing at seven thirty, and you just recognize, oh, my gosh, can I do this with a revolving fund? Is that something I can even do? Give me a call, we're always available. That's, that's really what we are here for, is to provide help to you. When I'm on vacation, or if I'm unavailable, Ryan is your backup. So Ryan and I will work collaboratively throughout the representation, so that she always understands what's going on in Bellingham. But if I'm not available, she's there for you. Like I said, we have twelve attorneys, so we're not too small. We have the expertise necessary to provide complete legal service to the town of Bellingham. And that's something we really pride ourselves on. And as the, the expert in Bellingham, if you get a super complex land use issue, I will sit down with Chris, and we will look at it together. So I will bring the expertise from the Bellingham side, and he will bring the legal expertise to make sure we get you the best answer. So you will start to get more and more familiar with us. We're only twelve attorneys, so by the end of the, you know, by the end of a couple months, we hope that you've met all of us. But ultimately, everything goes through me, and I will be your point person. And I think, you know, one thing we always kind of think about is why Bellingham? And for us, we think you would be an important client for us. We're interested in representing you. I really love working with communities in the fifteen thousand to twenty thousand size. I think it's a really great size. I get, it's not too big, I get to meet a lot of people and learn from board members. I really like it. In addition, you're grappling with some really interesting questions right now. Not only do you have the MBTA before you, MBTA zoning, you're considering whether to adopt the Community Preservation Act. I just helped two communities through that process. You have a town manager search, a town administrator search going on. I just did a town manager search in Reading, so these are things I really enjoy working with. And my background is also in environmental law. I did environmental law in law school, and I have a master's of environmental law and policy. I know you guys have E coli issues, water quality issues, so that's also really interesting for me. I started joking with them when I was in law school, I did a report on Bellingham's MS four draft permit, and so I like pulled it out from like twenty twelve and reread it, but it's just sort of funny, like coming for a full circle there, but you know, we think that you're doing interesting work here, and that we can really help and support that. That's sort of our like spiel, but like I said, I think the best way to get to know us and to see if we're a good fit, and we can work well together, is to ask questions and kind of have like an open conversation.
Anybody?
No, you don't. I, I have a few questions for you. Thank you very much for coming and responding to the R F P. We really do appreciate the attention paid. Like you said earlier, me, there'll be four.
Yeah.
You're all highly qualified. You've been doing this for a long time. Talk of what differentiates you, what your unique business value is to us, and you've explained that you're always available. One of the things that popped out in your R F P response to me is that you didn't offer a fixed fee. You offered an hourly rate, and you also are looking for a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. I think it was two forty is the rate, one fifty. That's a little unusual, I think. What we, so I've been on the select board now just this year, but prior to that, it was nine years. Always worked with the town council on a fixed fee basis. Are you open to negotiating with us on fixed fee basis?
Absolutely, yeah. So we do have communities that are on a retainer. I think one thing to think about with a retainer is making sure that, you know, our services are valued, so that the retainer is not too low, so that, you know, we're losing out. But also that you're not losing out. It needs to make sense for both the town and for our firm. And so part of sitting, of agreeing to a retainer would be seeing your legal bills. I know that you guys have a budget, but kind of seeing how you've done it over the past couple of years, seeing what's been included in your retainer, and what's been excluded from your retainer, and we can absolutely.
So, just so, retainer is different than fixed fee. Retainer is an alternative via arrangement, where fixed fee is, you're going to provide these list of services, and you're going to, and we're going to pay you X amount of dollars a month. Then anything above and beyond, we would have an agreed to rate. So what I'm asking you is, I would rather see a fixed fee proposal than a two forty an hour.
Yeah.
And then a hundred and fifty for travel time, because I can tell you, I will not approve anything to pay any law firm for travel time. It's just, that's, that's your expense, not ours, because I have no idea where you live. You could live in the North Shore. You know, so that's, so for me, it's no travel time, no admin expenses, none of that stuff, we just pay you a monthly fat fee. And if that's something that you discuss with us, great. If not, then.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not, I just, that's not the fee I would agree to.
Yeah, for sure. I think we would, we would definitely be open to that. We've done that in one community, so we would be willing to have that conversation.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Really, really looking for.
No, we don't, you know, we don't, we would very much like to earn your business.
Yeah.
We don't want that to be the deal breaker.
And I didn't expect it would be, but I think it would be unfair for, for me not to raise that as an item that we'd want to discuss.
In our experience, the trick is arriving at the right enough.
That's right.
And that depends in large part upon how you've used town council services in the past, how you intend to use them going forward, what you've got, what you've got going on. So it's, it's not impossible to come up with that, it just requires a discussion.
And, and I will say that, I haven't worked at town council in the past, I, I do really appreciate the fact that you pointed out that you may not have a response within twenty four hours, but you're going to, same business day, if I send you an email in the morning, you'll have a response to me in the afternoon, or by end of business, closing business, you may not have an answer. But I, I really appreciate that, because I don't like that, firstly, in business, that's how I act. My client gets a response, I might not have an answer, I ask them when it needs to be responded by, so I know kind of deadline, I have to work with them.
Right. And I think one thing that we really bring to tables, there are twelve attorneys, so if I'm in court, and you need a response that day, Ryan will make sure an answer is, is provided. So we, we do have the depth to still allow.
So is it your, would you want an email to you with a C C always to Ryan?
Yeah, and that's something we can work with. You know, you'll get an away message if I'm not available as well, so you'll know, but we'll work with the town administrator's office and the platform to figure that out.
Good, I'm good, thank you.
And that is, just to be clear, that is standard practice in most of our towns. We ever get a town, an administrator and say, Raffin, it would go to, to, to attorneys, and we would figure it out. But we would field it, or we would talk about how to do it. Thank you.
And the only, I, that was one of my questions, was the, the rate, but the other thing I didn't see in here, and I may not, I may have missed it, was I wondered if you had a a particular day that you would come in and be within the town hall, because I, in the past, when I've worked with town council, which I haven't worked with town council a long time, not since I was the town clerk, so. But he, he had spent one day in the building, and it was really convenient, because, you know, sometimes you would have a bunch of things on.
Yeah.
You could just run down and say, okay, how about this, this, and this? And I think it's important for everyone in, in these departments to have somebody available to them.
Yeah, we're absolutely open to do any hours, if that is what the, the town wants. I mean, we have to kind of work it out, what does it look like? Get a full day, or a half day, or a couple hours, you know, we have to kind of work through that. I think with Zoom too, it becomes a lot easier to build those face-to-face relationships with people, but we also want to make sure that it, it works out for everyone.
Correct, correct. Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
And we do do office hours, Chris does.
We don't do them in all of our towns, I don't even, the majority of our towns, but I do them in, I do weekly office hours in Needham.
Okay, good.
Every Thursday at one o'clock, I'm in select work chambers, sit there for an hour, for anybody who wants to come talk, and then I go by the D P W building to sign contracts and do, that's sort of a, you know, a check in with, with the bunch of people over there.
Right.
It's both, I mean, it's, it's good for, I think, two reasons in my experience. One, people who have questions can come see me and ask their question, and I'll either answer on the spot or take it back to the office, you know, respond the next day. It's also a good opportunity to catch up with the town administrator, town manager in Needham on project, on longer term projects, because sometimes there are projects that are going to sort of extend over a week or two, or a month. Like if you're getting ready for town meeting, or, or something like that. So it's both, you know, fielding new questions as they come, and checking in on sort of outstanding projects.
Yeah, and I can let Ryan talk a little bit, but both in Reading and in Templeton, we both have weekly check-ins with the town manager. And we find that to be really helpful to keep on track of all of the ongoing projects.
Right, that helps us to, to even, to look at things that might be coming down the, the pipe in a few days or a few weeks, and, and stay ahead of everything.
Thank you.
I have one question. I picked up in your, in your proposal, the training programs.
Yeah.
Could you just speak a little bit about what you've done in the past?
Yeah, for sure. So I think, you know, we've done open meeting law, public records law, state ethics law, procurement, we've done employment stuff as well, but what's really important is what is needed in Bellingham, and then we would adapt a training to fit that, or create a new training. So we did one community with having First Amendment auditors come a lot, and so we did a First Amendment audit training, you know, what to do when the First Amendment auditors show up. So we really want to make sure that it, it works for you. We have had a lot of success with like kind of the open meeting law, public records law, state ethics law, especially for new boarding committee members that aren't familiar with those laws that they're now bound by.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few things, I might should have been able to.
Yeah, I was just going to actually highlight a few things, and it's, just go back to Mr. Martinez, and put a bash in as well as yourself a month later, we get, it's, they definitely highlighted great things. It's, I was going to ask the same questions, but I don't want to ask it again, because it was just, you would just answer the questions. A couple of little things I like, you know, so you're open for discussion about the rate, it's, that was kind of a little stickler for me too.
Okay.
And just, I like that, you know, you say you're accessible, obviously, when you deal with the municipalities, and it's like you said, you know, it's, we might need to deal with something seven o'clock in the morning, or we might need to deal with something at eleven o'clock at night. And just to give us that opportunity, you know, to help us out with that situations, that's absolutely great. And I like that actually you worked with the C P A in the past, and that's something actually we kind of, we've been working on it, and then we try to move forward, and then this is part of that too. It's, so that's great to hear. And, and I like the idea about the, the, the training programs, and then you can adapt, and you can change it. They're absolutely great ideas, and some of the towns are actually, when I looked at it, you work with, and they are really similar to where we at. And there are definitely similarities, and which are great, and, but of course, there are the three companies, and other law firms, you know, it's, they all reputable as well as you are. And just, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That is, yeah, just, just a few things. You, you had mentioned that you try and stay in touch with what's happening in the community. How, how do you do that?
Yeah, so I do think it really helps that I have weekly meetings with the town managers and town administrators, that's one, and I just develop our relationship with the chairs of the select board as well, that, that's the point person for, for the boards in the communities I work in, and have conversations with them as things come up. I also read the blogs and Facebook posts, I like to kind of stay on top of that sort of stuff as well, but you know, I like.
You don't, you don't stay away.
But I do think building relationships with the city and town officials is really a key component.
I do work as the gatekeeper, obviously, we're paying out a little rate, so we want to make sure that, you know, everybody in town is calling you up.
Yeah.
How, how do you, I know how we do, but I'm curious.
Yeah, so I really encourage communities to have an access to town council policy, and whether that means everything goes through the town administrator and the select board chair, or whether that means any member of the select board and the town administrator can call. We kind of can sit down and talk about it. I don't know what your current policy is. Generally, most communities, elected bodies, the chair can call me, and the town manager will authorize staff, and then any member of the select board.
Which is why we like the, the fly fee. We've had it since two thousand and nine. I know that you did put it in as, as an alternative in your proposal. Because what I think what it does is, it, it allows us to be proactive and not being worried about gee, it's going to cost five hours and two hundred dollars an hour, we can
Yeah.
call for anything, we know what our, our budget is. As far as land use goes, our building commissioner and our town planner are here tonight, because in, in our conservation commission agent, they're probably the ones that utilize your services the most during the course of the year. Who's the primary person that's going to be handling that, or who are they going to be working with primarily?
And I think that would primarily be me. We've got a team, but in addition to me, we've got a team of two other attorneys in the firm who devote almost all of their time to land use law. That's Ethan Dybally and Tony Riley, who you can see, should be in materials, and you can check out their, their experience, all two both. Tony and Ethan are also former Land Court Lock Arts, so they spent, I think, both of them spent in excess of a year working with a guy for the Land Court, so those two may not know. The Land Court is a specialized trial court in Massachusetts, and only in Massachusetts, we don't really do things elsewhere. That handles the majority of the zoning subdivision and land use disputes in, in the trial court. So we've, between the three of us, we've got a wealth of experience with Land Court and land use and zoning. So typically, we will, we will work on the land use and zoning problems, you know, among the three of us. But again, within, within the same sort of model, I think, you know, based on our response, I would be the land use lead. But you would, over time, come to know, I think, Tony and Ethan both, who are excellent at what they do, and would, you know, also be available to, to work with the building commissioner, planning director, planning board, zoning board, appeals.
And the only thing I would add to that is that I do a lot of environmental work for our firm, so depending on what question is before the coms com, if it's reviewing an order of conditions or an N O I, that would be through me, and that would include the D E P appeal, or the Superior Court certiorari appeal.
So MBTA communities, as you know, we are one, we're going to be going in November, our deadline for adoption is December thirty first. My understanding is, it used to be D H C D, the agency formerly known as D H C, E L C, what? They haven't approved any, or they've approved two or three of the hundred plus that have been submitted. They just haven't, by approved, I mean, they haven't offered an opinion, period. The Attorney General has reviewed, my understanding, and bless him. Any idea what's going on with that?
It's, I mean.
Yeah, so I, I was speaking with H L C, I think they're just overworked right now. There's a lot on their plate, but they recognize that communities are at least doing their part in going through town meeting and adopting the bylaws, so I would, if it's a question about enforcement, I don't think that's an issue right now, but they're just too much work.
And in our, in our, in, you know, recently, we've seen, they have, you're allowed, when you're adopting MBTA zoning, I'm sure you all know, to submit a, a draft zoning bylaws for them to review, and they'll get back to you and tell you to pass this muster before you go to town meeting. They've got ninety days to, to conduct that review, and I think in all of our towns, they're getting those bylaws back on the ninetieth day at about four forty five. You know, it's, so they're, they're taking all the time that they have available, because I think they're chronically over, overworked.
We, we use one of their consultants, the consultants that they provide grant funds to, Judy Barrett, she's done a bunch of them, and she knows exactly what they're going to approve, what they're not going to approve. Hopefully, that's not going to be an issue, because we're putting this thing through in late November, I think, obviously, our intentions are getting it presented in time. But it sounds like it probably is not going to get approved until this time next year, maybe.
Sounds probably about right.
Yeah, which is fine.
And we've worked with Judy before, I know, it's like, it sounds like you're in good hands.
I, I think we'll be just, just fine. I know, we, we started late, so we probably have a minute or two.
Yeah.
You have until seven oh five, yeah.
Any experience with shooting ranges and disturbance? Any experience with, uh, shooting ranges and disturbance of the peace? A common problem that we've got in town. In other words, a shooting range is, is disturbing residents and, you know, protected status people with guns and, uh, as long as they're far enough away. Is, is there common complaint out there that you hear in municipal government?
It's not super common, but we have dealt with it. So Reading does have a shooting range. So I have, we are, Reading isn't a butter to that shooting range. So we have to work with the, um, the owners of the shooting range quite frequently. There was some talk about developing a noise ordinance, but there's a lot of issues with noise ordinances and bylaws around enforcement. So we, I'm very familiar with kind of how do we manage and handle that. In Littleton, we also adopted some, um, hunting. I'm sorry, gun, uh,
Store.
Store bylaws and gun discharge bylaws. You can't regulate hunting, but you can regulate the discharge of a firearm. So, um, we have worked with that, but it's not a common issue. So it'd be one of those things I'd be excited to, to learn more about.
Yeah, okay. Great. And, uh, you're all in the town, town administration search. So did they hire consultants or are you handling almost half their consultants?
Um, so we've done both, actually. Um, so in Reading this time around, they did hire a consultant, but I worked very closely with him. Um, community paradigm. I don't know if you guys are, you're working with a consultant.
With them last year.
Yeah, so I mean, I think Yeah, yeah, yeah. We worked with Bernie. Um, but I've also helped communities that haven't used a consultant, especially if you've recently gone through the process of like spending time talking to department heads, figuring out what they're looking for in a town administrator, then I think you have the tools necessary to do it yourself without our assistance. I don't think you necessarily need a consultant.
That's all right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I just have a follow-up if it's okay, Chair. Um, would it be helpful if we presented a proposal with like a flat fee arrangement? I know, um, we can do that. We can go back, kind of think about it a little bit and present something.
Yeah.
I would like that very much.
We'd love to see that.
We can get that information out to the board as quickly as possible, but I think the plan is to make a decision at your next meeting. So, and, and, and if you'd like, we can, uh, send you a couple of our, our bills over the last few months because they are itemized into flat fee arrangement. But they still, itemize the hours, so it'd be a good idea of what we do.
That'd be so helpful. So I can do that. Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to mention is, um, in addition, we do have a blog that we produce and send directly to our municipal officials and it's really to keep you up to date on kind of the key new things. And we believe that that is a really important component of our services.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna, what time did you wanna start that next one?
Well, we told them we're gonna start at seven ten. I'm gonna pause the, um, recording.
Good evening. How are you? How are you doing tonight? Okay, pleasure to have you. We, uh, kind of took a little break before we started with you. Um, so the second one is on the agenda this evening, uh, Brooks and, uh, Dementis.
Yep.
And, uh, we're pleased to have you. And, um, if you'd like to take the lead and go ahead and then, uh, we'll give you half an hour. I'm assuming you know we've been explained and, um, half an hour and then after that, you know, it's, um, you have some time, you have any questions or any of the board members, you'd love to ask some questions if possible.
Okay.
Pleasure to have you. What was yours?
So I'll start off by disclosing that we have worked for Bellingham some years ago. We were involved in defending a variety of forty B projects. I first got involved personally with the town through the town's insurance company, who assigned me to defend a number of lawsuits that were pending against town. Everything worked out fine. You, there is somewhere in your files a record of these things that we didn't done. And they all show that we are good at what we do. The second point I would make is that you're exactly the kind of community that we're interested in. Number one, because we represented you before, before. But also you're the right size for us. And you're not far away from me. I'm literally like fifteen minutes to get here. So I would be available twenty-four seven. We have, the towns we represent, they all at odd times, so can you step into something? We can, I, I certainly can step into anything that's going on there pretty quick. It's just a, a write down the road. We are the right size for you, given what we know about the town. We're not one of these big, large firms that represent half the state where they'll get lost. You won't have the kind of importance that you would have with us. Nor are we a small solo practitioner firm. Or one or two lawyers. We have quite a bench, quite a depth. We can pretty much cover everything. And we do cover everything for the towns that we, we represent. So we're in that sort of Goldilocks middle zone, where it's not too big and not too small, but just bright. And what that means for you is that instead of getting lost or having council who's overwhelmed, you will have attention from all of us. The senior team. We didn't bring everybody here tonight, but includes not only myself with my history of working with the town, but also Len Kopp, who was the founder of K P Law, who went into retirement and then the board wanted to come back, joined us. Rich is here and he worked for Bellingham. He did a lot of land use work for Bellingham, including forty B projects for the town. We've got a good team. So it's not only a full bench, but it's, it's a team that cares. It's a team that we recognize calling them as an important issue to our family of clients. One that we would cherish. But again, you know, you will not get lost with us. You will not be calling up saying, hey, I, I, I need attention. You'll have it from us. I'll say a little bit about ourselves. Myself, I'm a thirty year ten term selectman, myself, still in office. I'll keep re-electing.
You keep running.
Kind of one of those YouTube.
But the significance of that is that I I have been on your side of the table. And so I know, I know what I know what I do. And I've also had the distinction of pretty much hiring all the firms that you're interviewing for various projects for my community. And so I know a lot about what they do, how they operate and so on. And without getting into details, I can tell you I make sure we operate better than that. So for myself, in addition to being a thirty year selectman, I served on a finance committee. But I know about municipal finance. I served on a planning board, I know about land. I have worked with two governors as a assistant on local affairs. I've worked on the Mass Municipal Association Board of Directors for ten years. I've been president of the Massachusetts Selectment Association. So I've had the honor of representing all of the selectmen in the state. There isn't anything I haven't seen. I have a distinction in, I believe in the, the town record, the state record. I'm having attended one thousand two hundred and seventy-three town meetings. So I know a thing or two about town meetings. There just isn't anybody that you're going to interview or anybody that you can guess who's been to as many town meetings as I have and has encountered so many crazy things. At town, that's kind of the beauty of democracy of town. You almost never expect some of the things that happen, but they do happen. And you'd have somebody who knows how to deal with it. Well, enough, I guess, about myself, let me turn to Naomi, why don't you talk a little bit about your background?
Sure. Um, I, I'm Naomi Calmoto. Um, I'm one of the litigators with Brooks and Durensis. Um, I've been a litigator for about fifteen years. And doing municipal work for a while for now. Um, so I, in my capacity as a litigator, I've seen a lot of different things uh, in different towns like Paul was talking about. We see a lot of different things. Um, and in my broad litigation experience, also seen a lot of things. So we have a lot of different ways to handle things. Um, but what, going back to what Paul was saying about you getting to know you, getting to know the town, that's absolutely something that we do. Uh, and working with a bunch of different towns, you know, we get to know the different planning directors, the town administrators, so that they know when they can come to us with their problems. Because I'm involved not only in litigation when you actually get sued or if you want to get sued, but also in pre-litigation matters. So anytime there's a potential for a lawsuit, we're available to help you out with those. So that you don't get into those bigger kinds of lawsuits. You know, we're happy to help out with any of your questions. There's no question that's a dumb question. We're happy to help you. Um, we're very successful in that way. Um, when things do get to litigation, we do our best to get the best outcome for you. And sometimes that means coming to a quick resolution. We're going to be honest with you in terms of what your success might be in terms of your desired outcome. I've seen high cases, you know, where, for example, a planning board really wants to see an outcome happen. Um, and I look at the law and I will tell them, you know, that's just really probably not going to happen. I'm happy to defend it for you if that's the absolute way you wanna go. But I'm also gonna give you the honest truth and tell you that it probably isn't going to go, to go the way that we want to. And if you want to save the towns some money, we can absolutely try to do that. Um, so our philosophy is, you know, we look at every case, you know, we look at all the details, we get to know what's going on so that we can help you in the best way possible.
Just add to that that it's our policy as a firm that when a summons and complaint comes in, we take a look at it to make sure it's defensive. We're not the kind of firm that's just gonna start cracking up billable hours and three years later say to you, gee, maybe we should save if the case should settle. We'll look at it right at the beginning. And if the town screwed up, we'll tell you. We'll be very honest with you about that. And we'd rather work on fixing the mistake the town made so it doesn't happen again than spending years defending the mistake that was made.
I'm Rich Hudson. Um, I have been practicing law for over thirty-five years now. Um, concentrating my practice in municipal law with somewhat of a focus on land use, uh, and environmental permitting. I advise all of the, um, land use, uh, officials and boards. And, um, and kind of as we've been saying, we, uh, we, um, try to provide very good advice, uh, that will uh, keep them, you know, in the direction that they should be going and, and avoid, uh, getting into situations that could be, uh, expensive, uh, for, for the town. By giving, giving good advice on questions that come up during, you know, various applications, um, uh, for various land use permits from the planning board, the zoning board, the conservation commission. Um, I have served as a member and as a chairman of a conservation commission. I'm currently, uh, the vice chairman of my town's open space natural resources and trails committee. Um, so I, I think that these things show two, two of the things that we really offer, which are a great deal of experience. I'm, I'm pretty typical of the experience level of the attorneys that would be, um, serving you. Uh, and the other thing is commitment to public service. I think as, as Paul was saying, even more so. Um, uh, I'm doing this because this is what I wanted to. You know, the, the public service aspect of, of, um, municipal law. I feel that I am doing something that's helping um, the world and society, and that's why I do it. But those two things, um, experience and commitment to public service, we offer.
So that very much concludes our, like, opening statement, trying to say why we want to be your town council and why we think that you benefit from our being here too. Questions?
Questions?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for, for coming in this evening. Um, I, in your proposal, you had, um, put your, your rate at two forty an hour or two thirty an hour. I'm sorry, two thirty an hour and, and then, um, like paralegal time, I believe it's one thirty an hour. Would you consider, um, we've been working on a fixed fee or flat fee monthly arrangement for many years? Would you consider working with us to come up with a, a, a fixed fee, flat fee on a monthly basis instead of an hourly rate?
Yes. I've been thought of fixed fee in the proposal for a couple of reasons. One, the line, the whole process is exemplified clearly. So it's not really price out of there, this, right, this quality. But, but secondly, we don't know what your burn rate is. And so what we've done, we just, we just was appointed council and kind of community who wanted to have what we call a retainer style. So we ran a couple of months hourly, while we learned what we were facing. And after we figured out the scope of what we were dealing with, then we reached an agreement on a retainer going forward. So we are, we are open to that. But we wanted to be fair to both sides.
And, and thank you. And, and another question I have. Uh, we're just beginning the process of reviewing our zoning bylaws in the town. The, the zoning bylaws is a committee that's been formed. Our, our bylaws have not been properly reviewed forever. It's been a long time. So every now and then, Tom, we need, we're gonna update zoning bylaws. We do, we really need a, a full, like, sweep of everything based upon what Bellingham is today. We're, we wanna see Bellingham be in the future. Uh, how can you advise us in that area? You talk a lot about land use. Have you advised other communities in making sure that zoning are up to date with state regulations, but also getting a sense of really what we want this town to become for how we want it to grow?
Absolutely. Um, I am currently working with one of our, um, our other towns to do exactly that. So, so we, we have a direct experience in doing that, um, uh, for a town. And also, we're, we're, um, constantly dealing with, uh, with issues, you know, regarding zoning. Um, so we're, we're, we know what's happening with zoning and it's, that's something that we are very, uh, very capable of doing for you.
It's just, not to get too, too, too much, but you've read any of our meeting minutes, planning board, whatever. In preparation, you probably see that we've got some challenges with some developers in town that that wanna just stick things in because old zoning a lack of for, even though it's the wrong.
Building in the wrong place. And really struggling with working with that developer. To come to terms with what's best for the community and what's best for the developer, kind of coming together and planning together. As opposed to, well, I can put it there because your zoning says I can. And, you know, it's old zoning. So we really need to update. Our, our, the bylaws and zoning rules in this town. And that's where we, I see, we really need some serious help in that area. So, I mean, would that, would that fall under, as an example, would that fall under? I understand with a flat fee, there's certain things in a menu that you'll do within that flat fee in ten town meetings, advise town managers, administrators. But would something like that be in addition to or off maybe a separate fee for working with the zoning and. With, with that committee, at least reviewing what our thoughts are and giving us advice?
So one of our active. Very active. Areas of work. Is writing charters for communities, reviewing general bylaws. And reviewing zoning bylaws. And all of those are outside. The retainer. Yep. That's, that's all hourly. It's, it's hourly because it's a mixture of being creative. It's a mixture of. Looking at other towns about what they're doing. And it is very labor intensive.
Understood. That's why I wanted to ask the question. I wanted to say I have an improper expectation. So, okay, thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think as you explain yourself quite a bit, obviously, you've been around quite a while, very impressive resume. It's. Kind of a, we, and it's the things you. Or your law firm worked on collectively. That's quite a bit of, quite a bit of pages. So great to appreciate it for all the highlights and. And. Hopefully, you know, it's, we'll come to some kind of decision and it's on the next meeting, whatever that might be. Thank you so much. Anybody else, any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can I just do one sentence closing? And that is, as, as Richard said. We do this because we care. What really likes us, it makes us different. Is that we get involved in the things that you're trying to accomplish for your community. We're not just a hired gun. We become partners with you in trying to make it happen. Because we believe making the world a better place. Try to do that in the community with this collectively, but I try to do that in all our communities. We care. Thank you.
I have actually.
I get one follow-up, if you mind. Who would be our, the council? That wasn't mentioned in your presentation. Who would be representing? Okay. I just, I didn't hear that and maybe I missed it. So, thank you.
I have one quick question. Obviously, we're trying to. Look at everything from different angles by October seventh. You said after the Mr. Martin's question, are you open for a flat fee? Yep. Is there any chance, can you give us some kind of idea, maybe some kind of proposal, what that might be? Any?
I'd like to learn a little bit more about how time operates. I mean, if you're. We have some towns that are very assessives. And it turns out that they're low experienced people that are going to change the government. They're all newcomers. And, and we're trying to teach them open meaning law. We're trying to tell them. Can't take executive session stuff and give it, we're, we're at. Such a primitive level that when you look at. What's going on there. It, it was running like, like twelve thousand a month. Whereas another community, they have some lawyers on the board. They were experienced. They knew what they were doing. And they were running like. Four or five thousand a month. And so. We don't have a magic number. We've discovered that. We don't do cookie cutter stuff. We don't say. You know, you're the same as, as every other town. We really. Would suggest. We'll make a commitment. Let us work together. Let's find out about you, what, what you need. If you're a community that never calls, you'll get. A low number. If you're a community that's like us every day. Multiple times. And then disorganized and, and hate each other. So it's just so busy fighting that you're asking us to mediate between different members. I mean, all. That's just a totally different cost.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. Thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Rich.
Good to see you, Jonathan. Pleasure to have you this evening. And the next small firm for town council on the agenda is me, Tally Minn and Costa. And I'll see. And.
That's great. Thank you. I'm Mr. Chair, members of the board. It's great to be with you this evening. So I'm Adam Clasta. We just introduced ourselves. Kate Federoff, my partner. Good to be here tonight. We are very familiar with Bellingham. We were town council, as you probably know, for almost ten years, from two thousand and seven until. Two thousand and eight until two thousand and seventeen. So it's good to be back. As Mr. Frayn had mentioned, I continue to do work in Bellingham as I have for the past ten years. As a legal counsel, a special counsel to your Board of Assessors, mostly with cases that make their way to the appellate tax board. That's something I did quite a bit of for the town. When we were town council, when you transitioned to different council, back in two thousand and seventeen, the decision was made to continue to use my services. So. I've continued to represent the town in that respect. Let me tell you a little bit about our firm. I know you've got a question and answer on your agenda as well, so then we'll give you an opportunity certainly to ask any questions you have of us. We are strictly a municipal law firm. We represent municipalities across the Commonwealth from the North Shore to Cape Cod, from Metro Boston to the Berkshires. We have three offices in Newburyport, Milis and New Bedford. But sometimes it feels as if we have many more than that because so many of us are on the road on a regular basis. Out three, four nights a week, get planning boards, zoning boards, similar four meetings. We have seventeen attorneys plus support staff spread out over those three offices. We're somewhat of a different firm than we were when we started doing work for Bellingham back in, in two thousand and eight. At that time, I was a much younger lawyer with much browder hair. And we were a small firm at that time. We had, I think, five, maybe six attorneys, virtually no support staff at the time. Bellingham was one of the three, our first three municipal clients, general municipal law. We represented Ashland, Bellingham and Kingston. I remember those three. Quite well because I used to rattle them off. They were the three we had for a number of years, pre-recession and through the recession. And then we began to expand our municipal practice in the. Early two thousand and tens, and we now have over three dozen municipalities, as I mentioned, across the state. Most of us got our start as land use lawyers, so we have strong experience in real property matters, which I think lends itself well to municipal law, because so much of what you do as a municipality has some sort of a land or development component to it. I was even perusing your recent agendas over the past six months to see what had been happening of late in Bellingham. And I saw things like. MBTA communities. I saw you had on your agenda a couple of months ago, a discussion about zoning recodification, maybe doing it in a piecemeal fashion to try and address portions of your zoning bylaw that. Haven't been reviewed. And I think you created a zoning bylaw review committee. So those are the sorts of things that we've been doing. I've been doing those things since I started practicing law. We continue to do those things for the municipalities that we represent. And in fact, in addition to the communities where we're general municipal council, we are often hired. Regularly hired as special municipal council to assist communities that we don't represent generally on land use matters, whether that be. Negotiating land disposition agreements or assisting with a chapter forty, the affordable housing project, or recently MBTA communities and things of that sort. I'm. Working with a community right now on chapter forty R, smart growth housing. We're rezoning an area. In, in a community on the, on the South Coast that they've been looking at this for years and they brought us on as, as special counsel. We're representing another community where they're. Redeveloping a former state hospital site and we're negotiating land disposition agreement for that project. So, you know, having said that, we of course practice all areas of municipal law. So I mentioned before that I do quite a bit of work with the appellate tax board. I also do work with the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission. We have a number of attorneys that litigate on a regular basis, myself included, that manage. Everything from land use litigation to code enforcement litigation. And so we have that expertise also. We assist with. Matters that come before your, your Board of Health enforcement issues, whether it be state sanitary code or environmental code enforcement. That's something that we handle quite, quite. Bit for the municipalities that we, we represent. And then we have lawyers that specialize in different areas of the law that are up and coming. So. First, it was medical marijuana, then it was recreational marijuana, and it's still recreational marijuana. There's a lot about in communities. And so we're assisting many of our communities and, and. Navigating that relatively new area of the law. Green energy is something we've been dealing a lot with, whether it be. Wind turbines, which were all the rage about fifteen years ago, but not so much anymore. But of course, solar is now where, where the money's at, because of the state and federal subsidies. And so. We're assisting many of our communities, whether it be in crafting zoning, then try and navigate the unique environment for solar with that solar exemption that the legislature has worked into chapter forty eight, section three. Or finding other ways in a municipality where you can realize an economic benefit from, from, from these sorts of, of projects. So. We have the expertise in all these various sorts of areas. I'm going to pause for a moment, take a breath and let Kate tell you a little bit about the firm as well.
So I'm Kate Federoff. I'm one of the newest partner at the firm. Prior to joining the firm, I worked for the city of Brockton. I was the senior assistant solicitor and I essentially ran that department and we were self-insured. So that meant we dealt with everything. From your typical slip and fall, which I assume you guys would send to insurance council, slip and fall to civil rights to. I am amazed. There's a whole host of huge infrastructure in Brock, Brockton with a wastewater treatment plan, a diesel plant, a water plant. I am amazed with various communities because it's such a large infrastructure. So I was approached by Jay, whom many of you may know. Some years ago now, eight years ago, something like that. To join the firm and I had really no interest in doing that. I was really quite happy working for Brockton. I, the thing that I loved working for, working in Brockton, the thing I loved about it was the fact that I was really part of the fabric of the city hall. Right? So it was pretty typical that you would start your day. And expect to go through six or seven items. And none of those items were. Reached because ten emergencies came up, right? People would run down to your office and say, I have this crisis, fix it for me. And you had to do that. And I loved kind of the, the. High energy feeling of working in the hall and I really didn't have a desire to leave. And when Jay talked to me about this firm. He represented, and I learned it to be true, that. Really our approach to municipal law is to become part of your team. So what we do is we have office hours. We meet regularly with department heads. We go to board meetings and we try to address problems on the front end. Before they become bigger problems, right? Because part of our structure in terms of. Costs, we offer a flat fee option per towns is to contain costs. And what that means is. We would rather give you five solutions to a problem before it becomes litigation or a bigger problem or something that is going to cost. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in litigation fees, right? So with that in mind, I joined the firm and, and it was proven to be. One hundred percent accurate. I'm lead in several, several of the towns that we represent. And I talk to my town administrators. Probably every day, and it could be a quick text of an update on something, quick email, a phone call. Everyone has my cell phone. So it's really accessible. And what it does is it builds that relationship such that they're not afraid. Staff isn't afraid to call you and say, I'm going to talk to Kate. It's not like I'm going to call the lawyer. It's I'm going to speak to Kate. And bounce some ideas off of her. And. And it yields really positive results, I think. So that's my history. Now, with this firm too, in Brockton, I handled all the labor and employment matters. And if you can imagine, big city, so we had thirteen unions. I negotiated with all those unions. I did all the MCAD complaint defensive, uh, of defense work. All of that stuff I manage, including employment matters like FMLA and, and, and just general day-to-day advice. For the firm, I do that as well. And I'm not sure, it was unclear to me in the RFP if you all are looking for labor, but that's, that's my real area of expertise. And I do that for probably two thirds or three quarters of the towns that we represent. So I'm lead and then we have several backups that support me. So my approach to that is very similar to my approach to general municipal work. And that's really to show a lot of respect across the table. So. My philosophy on employee relations is that hopefully you have these employees for thirty years and they stay. Because they like working here, they feel well-treated, they feel respected. So if I go into a negotiation with a sewer department and they're coming off their shift. I'm going to treat them and shake their hand just the same as I would a police officer or I would the chair of the Board of Selectmen, right? So I like to, I like to show that respect. Sometimes you say no. Sometimes you have hard decisions to make. And then. You defend the town's position aggressively, but it starts. Pretty much on the front end with building those relationships with union stewards, et cetera. To try to have a healthy management lawyer relationship, management labor relationship.
So you have our proposal. I know, I'm not going to read it to you word for word, but I, I want to bring to your attention maybe the most important part in my mind of this. And that's our, our list of references. It's toward the back of the package. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to, to reach out yet or we will reach out. But I looked at your agenda for tonight. You're interviewing four firms. We know the firms. We know our competition. You will be well-served by all four of these firms. These are all qualified municipal law firms. So we're all going to sit here. We're all going to tell you how great we are because that's the bitch that's supposed to do. You're going to be well-served. I think the best thing you can do is take it from somebody who's had direct experience with us. I was in a, in an interview, this is going back maybe five or six months ago in a community and. They had done their, their research in advance and a member of, of the, of the council in that, in that community said that he had contacted one of the communities, Ryan Reed Council. And he said that the, the review was glowing, that that community, that town manager said, you would have thought that that community was my only client. That's how impressed they were with the responsiveness. And that's what we strive for. I can't tell you that's going to be the case in every instance, every day of every week. But it is, it is the philosophy, to go back to what Kate said, it is the philosophy of our firm. We've tried to provide a different type of town council service. Where we are approachable. You have different fee models and, and we can get into some of that if you have questions about it. But we have a flat fee model. We have a hybrid model. We have a more traditional hourly model. The benefit of something like a flat fee model is it provides for certainty in terms of what your cost will be. And it also provides for. A certain comfort level among municipal staff to pick up the phone and call in advance of a problem arising as opposed to calling us once they receive the summons in the mail. Which we can fix. And, and very often, we, again, we litigate, we litigate in many of our communities. Sometimes it's unavoidable. But it tends to be a lot more expensive on the backend than it is in the frontend. So we try, we try to pitch that proactive approach. We try to be responsive, to give you timely advice. To give you advice that's tailored to your community and not, you know, the opinion we dusted off from five years ago that we gave to another community. Because every community is different. And, and again, we've been here before. We know that Bellingham is not Rentham, Bellingham is not Marblehead, Bellingham is not Newbury. Bellingham is Bellingham. And so, well, we try to be responsive and, and recognize that and provide you timely advice that is unique to your community and your situation, whatever it might be.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. I know. In some of us, I have some questions. But I have. I like the idea about the flat fee. And I think, you know, it's, that's what we mentioned that the. Other two law firms before you. And I think it will sure was better than we budgeted. other two law firms before you. And um I think it will sure was better than we budgeted. All our expenses and um, and the weather comes with it. Um, I have a quick question here. Um, it's a proposal that Mr. Tellerman is gonna be the lead.
That is what we had proposed and it is very unique that Mr. Tellerman, the, the interview, he's proposed a lead counsel.
That's what I was gonna ask you. It's um, obviously, I like what I see so far. I really appreciate it for the knowledge and um energy and everything comes with it. Some of the proposals, you know, it says Mr. Tellerman is gonna be the lead on council and you can explain that why he's not here, he's gonna be the lead.
I, I can't.
A little in Newbury for, and um it's not a ten-minute drive.
It was not a ten-minute drive. Well, as you can appreciate, as a municipality, um, what are your most important meetings of the year? Your town meetings. And it just so happens, we have a town meeting this evening in Chatham. Also not that close to Bellingham. Uh, and Mr. Tellerman had to attend that town meeting tonight. He's very much involved in it. It's actually one warrant I've been told of the town meeting. But he's been very much involved in it and it's highly controversial. And so he had to attend the town meeting. So he very much anticipated being here, but it was the evening that you scheduled your, your interviews and he couldn't be. Uh, what I can say is this, I can say, first of all, if you have interest in our firm, certainly you're all free to speak directly to Mr. Tellerman. He'd be happy to do that. Uh, Jay's very approachable, invite himself available. Um, we also don't dictate to our municipalities who the point of contact has to be. We recommend it and we try to structure it so that no one of our attorneys or one of our partners has too much on their plate so that they can't be responsive. Um, but you can visit our website, you can look at the materials we provided, you're met Kate, you're meeting me. Um, i- if you have a desire to have somebody else at the firm be your lead point of contact. Uh, again, we don't, we don't fight over work in the firm. We're, we're busy, we're responsive to our clientele, so. Um, but he, he sends his regards, he was quite disappointed he couldn't be here because again, he was your lead point of contact for almost ten years when we represented you previously and um, he was, he was excited when he saw the RFP go out and said, um, in, in, in seventeen years, only two communities have we represented as town council that have moved on from us and Bellingham is one of them. So he said, let's get him back.
Yeah, I, I will say that um JD called the uh, right when the RFP came on and saying, when the dates came out for the interviews and said that um, so I, I think it's an overriding question and it's going to town meeting for appropriation, much like we just did with the fire department. We went to appropriate the money and in Chatham, I guess it's very contentious as to whether or not they are going to appropriate that money or not. So I can fully understand why the town manager wants to make sure that they're.
His council is there, you know.
I mean, we'd expect the same, you know, if it was a town meeting and they had to go to another town, we'd expect JB or to any one of them to be at our town meeting.
Well, absolutely. I respect that. It's um definitely, it's um, I, it's. If I, somehow, you know, have a conversation with Mr. Tellerman as well, as well as you. And I think it would be.
You can set that up, we can set the.
I was gonna say that it is so. It's not too much to ask.
Absolutely. We'll make ourselves available.
I have no other questions.
Uh, the questions that I've had you answering in your presentation, so as much as I'd like to ask you a question. I'm not going to, as you answered it for me and I'm satisfied. Well, thank you, sure.
You answer my questions, that's what happens, okay.
So you would continue to work with the obsessive office, cause I know that's an area of expertise that is very much uh uh appreciated by the office there.
I, I would. So the way that we structure all of our representations is we have a lead point of contact and then we have an immediate backup. And that doesn't mean that you're only dealing with two attorneys at the firm. You're gonna get the benefit of a seventeen attorney firm with support staff. You're gonna be working with some regularity with the different attorneys in the firm. But nobody likes to see a different face every time you request presence at a meeting. Uh, nobody likes to be calling it, uh, calling and speaking to a different, a different attorney every time you, you phone the office. And so the idea is that most of your day-to-day contact is with your, your principal point of contact. That's the person who is your lead counsel. Um, we provide a backup. In this case, we propose Jay as the lead and me as the backup. So then in the event that Jay wants to take a vacation a couple of times a year, uh, you don't say, well, Jay's on vacation for a week, so we have no point of contact because he's out of the country or he shut his phone off. You've got a backup. Or even on a regular day, you call up, you reach out to Jay. It's, it's time-sensitive. Jay doesn't pick up his phone because he's in court. You can pick up the phone and you can call me. Um, having said that, again, you're gonna work with the many attorneys in our office because if you call with a cannabis question, we have two attorneys that do a lot of cannabis work. And so we're gonna send you to one of them. If you call and you have a specific question about a matter that is related to dealings with your Board of Assessors or an appellate tax board case, you're gonna talk to me because I'm likely handling that for you. So yes, I would continue to do that work.
And I think the point of contact is an interesting um, i- an important piece of our representation because for example, when you're at those big meetings like town meeting, you have all the history of these various projects. It's not siloed to the land use department or the real estate department. The lead attorney is aware of all of these issues. Now they're going to give you other associates and other partners who may be more expert in that area or, you know, just have more time and it's something that an associate could handle. Um, but the lead attorney is always just kept apprised. So it helps you balance um various aspects of the municipal law issues that you're dealing with because one issue may inform a completely seemingly unrelated issue. Um, but they're connected in a way that the person who's working on a particular project may not know, but the lead attorney does. So.
Makes sense.
Maybe you have one question. What do you mean? We've been well over our potential time placement time and um, occasionally have developers come in and say, well, you know, obviously they, they have the right to submit and it has to be processed. What, ha- have many been approved in communities that are in safe harbor or is it, is it truly a, a no? They're, they're just dead in the water if um the community's in safe harbor, if the community doesn't want it.
If the community doesn't want it and the zoning Board of Appeals denies the comprehensive permit application, the Housing Appeals Committee, which is the appellate body, the administrative agency that reviews all appeals by developers of comprehensive permit denials, lacks jurisdiction to hear the appeal.
Okay, so it's dead in the.
It's dead in the water. Correct. So the only, the only real way, I'm, I'm working in a community now that is over their ten percent and they are interested in the forty B development that, that is proposed. Um, if they're interested in, and, and they're cooperative, then nothing prevents them under the law from granting the comprehensive permit, notwithstanding having satisfied that minimum threshold of ten percent. Uh, but if they don't want it, they're not gonna get it.
Which is what we understood, but uh it's been suggested otherwise, but I think it's just somebody with a little plus, so, yeah.
That's right. Yeah, good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Probably surprisingly late tonight. They usually crawl down four ninety-five.
I didn't bring it with me.
It's funny you say that because I actually. Do you have it?
Just on my phone, so.
This could be the topic. Yeah, I think you, you just put us back on.
I did. Yep, we're on. Okay, so.
First one was the search committee, I think. I'll start with the search committee anyway.
The town clerk.
Oh, town clerk. Larry, I, I think everyone's aware that Larry is um retiring. Uh, that's his plan. He is um selling his home, buying another home. So obviously it, it could be, you never know in this complication, when you're selling, selling one and you're buying another one. But that's his plan. He is going to stay on through the election. And I have some recommendations for the board, but obviously I might have to bring them forward now until we know for sure. Um, that, that this is happening. I know Larry's, you know, believes it is going to happen and we all wish him the best, obviously, and and um he is going to stay through the general election, through the certification. And um, you know, his term was actually up in June, spring election. So I know I get, I have a tough time saying June, it was always May. But anyway, the June election is, he, his term was up, so uh you know, obviously I'm sure there'll be candidates vying for, for that position. Excuse me?
And going out of retirement?
Oh, God, no. Thank you very much. I wouldn't work these elections to save my soul.
The, um, the next thing was the market basket bags.
Oh, yeah. Now that we're moving the DBW offices over to Depot Street, one of the things we were trying to do is, is figure out what would be more convenient for residents coming in and there are quite a few communities that do it, sell bags and groceries. So it's a market basket to do it at no cost to the town, which is nice. We'll bas- basically send them the bags, give them a bill and um, you know, they'll, they'll send us payment. So I think it'll be great for residents, because I don't know how many times I need them and, you know, the DBW is closed or it's the weekend and I didn't get them at the recycling center or whatever else. So I think it'll be a nice little, but the, the fee is twenty dollars for five bags. Um, is, is what we wanna sell them for based on the cost and the cost of the trash. Because typically they're overflow bags. So our, our cost, our fee is based on what we anticipate from those containers being full. It's all averaged out. We know what our tonnage should be over the course of the year. And when, if, if we do sell a lot of these bags, which I think we will, obviously there's a cost associated with the tipping fee, not the collection company. The company collects some, it doesn't cost us anything extra, but where they take it to. You know, the tonnage is what's important. So I think that's something that, um, but you'll see those, and we're gonna try and find a place in South Bellingham, preferably stop and shop, um, and they do it in other cities. Yeah, one, one in the north, one, one in the south. So I think that will work out, um, quite well. The, the search committee, it's, it's going extremely well. We, we, we had a meeting, um, we had one meeting or two meetings.
We only had one meeting.
One meeting. We have a meeting next Monday, uh, where the screening committee will actually get binders with all the resumes. I, we had uh mid twenties as of uh today. Today is the final day. So um, we do have like twenty-four, twenty-five resumes. I think, I think we have some very good candidates um to look at. And the screening committee will be getting those binders. We'll be having a discussion about the internal process. The open meeting hour, as we said, uh, provides for a screening committee to review, to screen and interview in closed session. Doesn't allow a select board or appointing authority to do it in closed session. So it's interesting. The, the select board cannot do it, even if it was the initial screening in closed session, but you can appoint a screening committee to do it. That's the way the law is written. And I think it makes sense to, to a degree because it protects the identity of candidates. So no one applying. If um they've got a job they like, but they're looking for an advancement, you're not gonna do it if it's, if it's public right away. So we, we do have a, a good number of uh candidates. We're gonna have that meeting next Monday. They'll get their binders with all the resumes. Uh, we talked about the confidentiality of the process with, with, with the, with the group and they understand that. And that is a protected confidentiality. So um, you know, it, it's somewhat serious in that, you know, people could could have their, their livelihood impacted if, if they're told it's confidential. It turns out it's not. They're coming to play. I know. It, it's an issue. So we have that. Then we're going to have a meeting two weeks later, next week, oh, the following week, where we actually discuss, it's good thing Hillary's. Hillary's coordinating all this morning. It makes me look good. But um, so we'll, we'll actually have that meeting the following Monday. And that's when we'll determine who we're actually, we'll discuss them all. So the group will have them for a week in the binders, review them, do their own Google search, et cetera. Um, we'll all do that and we've done some already and we'll pick the candidates that we wanted. And uh.
That's gonna be our longest meeting.
That'll probably be our longest meeting. So we'll, we'll select the candidates that we want to uh interview. Um, we'll discuss the parameters or the, the, you know, we, we, we wanna talk about economic development, wanna talk about your experience in finance. We wanna talk about your experience with land use, interaction with different boards and committees, school committee and, and we historically had good relationship between you know, the town manager and the superintendent, what's it like where you're at. Things, so, so there'll be, there'll be um categories and then questions within each of the categories. And then the screening media will, will look to recommend as many or as, as few as they deem is appropriate or, or meet the qualifications, hopefully four or five. And um obviously we'll contact those individuals, let them know that it's gonna be public. And we'll have a, a soft background check done on them. We have somebody um that will perform that, just so you have all the information you possibly need when they come before you. And if you're not, i- i- if you weren't satisfied with those, you do have the opportunity to go to training committee and say, give us your next or give us your next two or three or whatever the case may be. Um, the process can continue that way. I know that was a concern last time in that um you had four and you wanted to see, well, can we see another two or three or whatever. And that wasn't the way the agreement was written up uh with the consultant, so. Um, so that process is, is moving right along. I think you'll have uh being in a position where you can schedule interviews the end of October.
Yeah, we're planning on our um interviewing them the fourteenth and the seventeenth.
Yeah, so we would have recommendations. We might have another meeting to deliberate over, you know, who the, who the, the final.
Yeah.
Candidates are.
That's great.
I think you'll be able to schedule a meeting. Uh, we'll talk about scheduling a meeting the end of October uh for your due interviews.
That's awesome.
Can't get that going.
You're gonna do an executive session, yeah?
Um, you don't, uh, yes, oh, the executive session on the, on the um battery storage. I will have copies of the host community agreement. I know the question was asked when the firm was in, can we participate or, you know, can we have input on the host community agreement? I will get it out to, to uh everyone so that you can see where it's at. Our council has gone back and forth, negotiated. You know, all, all the particulars to safeguard the community as far as who's responsible for what. So you'll see that in the agreement. But then there's a list of financial opportunities um that are there that the fire chief, police chief, public works would like to see. And we have the benefit of having seen Medway's agreement, cause Medway is a year ahead of us. So you know exactly what they did there. We, we have a sense of format a lot, you know, what we should be looking for. And um we'll have an opportunity to look at that and, you know, if you need more money, you should go in one area than another area. Um, I don't think the, I know that they don't, they're not concerned with where it goes as long as they have the practical use. If, if we wanted it all to go to the fire, they're okay with that. If you wanted it to be split between fire, those are the types of things that, that you can discuss and negotiate. We can have a negotiation with them relative to amounts too. May, maybe we feel that, you know, certain areas need to be pieced up a little bit, so. That, that'll be, that'll be that session. And I, I did mention on, on the, on the town administrative search, obviously, you know, I would, I would stay until such time as um the, the individual can start. Typically, you know, they're gonna be at least thirty days, forty-five days is more likely. That's mid-December, so it may very well be January first, but you know, it may be that somebody is, is not working presently and be able to start within a week or two. That's fine too, so. All right, great. So no introductions required.
Please join us. Evening, everyone.
We're moving that quite a bit of speed over here. Um, pleasure to have you.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. And uh, our loss law firm, which we are very familiar with, BP Law. And um, what is new, it's uh, flow is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and, and thank you to the board for giving us this opportunity to reintroduce ourselves to, to the town uh in extending the privilege for us to um if all goes well for us, um, to continue the seven years as town council that we have been serving to the town. Uh, as you all know, my name is Joe Fair. With me tonight is uh Lauren Goldberg and my fellow shareholder, as well as the firm's managing partner. Um, I'd like to start off by sharing a little bit about myself that some of you may not be familiar with, as well as uh give an overview basically of the firm, sort of what our um upper model is, before then turning it over to Lauren to share a little bit about herself and provide some additional information about our proposal and just what we think um makes KP Law the right choice for the town. Um, myself, I've been with the firm for over twenty years now. Uh, as I said, I am a shareholder in the firm. My areas of specialty are general municipal law, which is the function that I've been serving for the town of Bellingham. For essentially the seven years that we've been here. That runs a gamut of different types of areas, uh, open meeting law, uh, public records law, municipal finance, town meeting, conflict of interest, things of that hill. Um, I'm also the primary contact as town council for, for other KP Law communities that we serve. Um, I'm also happen to be, uh, and I realize you're not looking for a separate, you already have separate labor council, but I also happen to be uh, a specialist in labor and employment and I serve, I, I'm not even sure exactly the number, but certainly well over fifteen of our communities and a primary labor and employment um specialized area. So for the seven years that I've been uh serving uh for the town as primary contact, uh, I've essentially been the main point of contact that's been in the town. Uh I've essentially been the main point of contact that's been in the town and the firm for all the legal services that have come through. For the past year or so, some of the areas that we've um, some of the matters that we've handled, we've had all kinds of of municipal. Uh type issues that come up, contracts reviews, uh real estate matters, zoning and land use, um open meeting law issues or conflict of interest issues. Um we're also constantly monitoring the developing areas of of the law, which. Recently, that came up in the context of a flag policy, which is an area that's evolving. Um cable license renewals and things of that nature, um just to name a few. Our firm serves as town council or city solicitor to approximately a third of the Massachusetts communities. In many cases, we represented these communities for decades. Um we think that the the number of clients that we have and the longevity with which we've represented represented them. Uh is a testament to, you know, the type of um not only quality service that we provide our clients, but the value as well. Uh we recognize that municipal budgets are not unlimited and in that regard, we try our our best to. Um you know, provide as efficient a a legal product um as we can, while at the same time maintaining a high level of of quality um that you all. Expect and deserve. There is um very few municipal legal issues that we haven't seen that have come across. So in that regard, we we feel that our firm is is well suited to. Provide, you know, the breadth and the scope of our experience and pass that economies of scale onto the town, onto our clients. Um rather than us reinventing the wheel or looking into a matter for the first time. In many cases, we've already dealt with that issue in some other um. Community or or in a very similar way, uh and that's easily often adaptable to. You know, the the issue that might be facing the town at that time. You know, this saves our clients a lot of time, saves them money. Um and in the end, you know, I think it becomes a win-win for both sides in that regard. Now, the way we we sort of operate as, you know, a firm model. We utilize a team approach. So while at the same time that our clients are reaping the benefits of our larger size, our larger firm size and our our um. You know, coverage across the Commonwealth. For our individual clients, we utilize a small team approach. That's to keep the level of service for each client more personalized, more continuity between the attorneys. Um that are yet you're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. The way that team approach works, this is a primary contact and then this a backup. Primary contact for lack of a better term, who stands uh as as I said, the primary gatekeeper for all the legal requests that comes in. Behind the the primary in the back, we also have designated legal specialists. So for areas of the law that the cities and towns encounter. Such as real estate matters, land use, zoning, you know, contracts, you know, we designate a team behind us. So. There's people already standing at the ready to handle the matters and it's familiarity um that that breeds as well. As I said, the role, the the primary is to serve as that gatekeeper so that, you know, if there are questions that come in. You know, that that becomes the primaries, you know, primary responsibility to sort of vet that initial question and see what is needed. If there is an area of of specialty needed, it does get assigned out to that designated specialist, but at the same time. Uh the primary's job is to continue to monitor that that assignment, making sure that any deadlines that the town has are also being met. Sort of our internal checks and balance system that we use, um that I know Dennis is 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 quite familiar with. When, and what what this does with the primary system, as I said, is it keeps that network of attorneys that that generally speaking, you're working with, you know, fairly small, fairly tight. For our particular proposal for the town, we're actually proposing uh essentially maintaining the same team that we've had here. Uh for the past few years at least, and we think it's been very successful. We think it's been um. Been providing, you know, good quality legal service as well as uh efficient and timely responses. Um that legal team would consist of myself continuing as the primary lead attorney. Um with Amy Questle serving as my backup. At the same time, Amy would also continue on as the primary land use and zoning specialist for the town. Um Lauren would continue on to serve as a secondary backup to myself and Amy and um. Providing a lot of expertise in in other specialized municipal areas. Um she has been over the years, whether it be town meeting, elections and and things of that ilk. Rick Holland would remain on as the contracts specialist. And Sharon Everett, who's been providing real estate uh advice and and guidance for the town, would continue in that role as well. You know, we really feel that that team provides in maintaining that continuity is is of value to to both sides, really. Because we have a an institutional knowledge that. No one else really would have, including some of our competitors that you may be considering tonight. Um and as I said, because there has been that continuity in the relationships, town officials are familiar with them. Um we think that has been so far a very good fit for the town and we'd like to to continue on. We're always, of course, open to any adjustments as as needed, but at this point, we're we're not feeling like there is a a need to do so. Um given the feedback that we generally receive from the town, from its department heads and other town officials, as well as board members. Um as the primary, I'm accessible. Basically, at all times, uh obviously through email, but Dennis and and and. Many, if not all, of board members have my cell phone number. That's uh which I I invite you to use if there's any uh questions or issues that may come up. Um there are oftentimes things you can't anticipate, emergencies come up. That's why we have the cell phones um. You know, we're we're not a value to you if we're not accessible to you. So, you know, we pride ourselves in being responsive and being accessible. Uh so that's sort of the overview of things. I'd like to turn it over to Lauren, tell a little bit about herself. But a little more info on the firm and then answer any questions aboard me then.
Well, thank you again for having us this evening. I I know most of you. Um I've seen you at town meeting and and dealt with you in in various uh capacities. And for those that I haven't, you know, hello. Um and we uh, you know, we we hope to have the opportunity to develop a a stronger relationship. Um I have been with the firm since the year two thousand and started off as an associate um. While of uh becoming a shareholder and when. The uh named partners for the firm left uh or or decided to sell the firm to us in the year twenty thirteen, I became the managing attorney at the firm. So I'm the firm's president. Um so I I get to do a lot of work with municipal clients because I that's what I love to do. Um but I also have the opportunity to kind of see uh how things are when running a business. And I understand that. Municipalities are a business. You're a, you know, a client focus, meaning the public is your focus and you. Need to provide them uh with with services uh and those services. You need to feel confident that what you're doing is legal and that you have the support of your legal team. And uh we really strive to provide you with that in. Any context. And as Joe was saying, um one of the things that, you know, we really pride ourselves on is that. We have seen a lot of uh municipal issues that. They're themes and they they come up from town to town. And so while every single town is different, its own charter, its own bylaws, its own. Town meeting procedures and and um practices uh that we're able to kind of bring that that big picture uh to to benefit you. Um another thing that we do as a firm and that we feel um really helps us stand out is. Uh we do monitor all new case law uh that affects municipalities and all new laws that affect municipalities. And not only are we monitoring them at the end when that law is passed, but. Well before, we keep an eye on it while they're in the legislature. We work closely with the M M A um to uh, you know. Understand what what their priorities are and to make sure that our clients' interests are being represented. So, for example. During COVID, which now is luckily uh in the rearview mirror in terms of our day-to-day dealing with it. But we worked very closely with the state, um the secretary's office and the elections division. We work closely with the attorney general's office for the open meeting law. Um issues and uh with the legislature and trying to come up with legislation that would allow towns to push their town meetings and push their. Uh town elections to a time period when it was safe to hold them. Um so, you know, we really uh, we really. Uh pride ourselves on keeping those relationships up to date and and active. And, you know, again, we we interact with them on a daily basis in this. New MBTA zoning that has been um, you know, dealt with in in many towns across the state. We've. Worked with the attorney general's office to try and figure out what kind of um provisions they would would be uh. Willing to accept and and worked with them very closely on that, all to the benefit um of our of our clients. Uh in terms of my home personal experience, I I think many of you have seen me at town meeting. I often assist with municipal finance questions and, as Joe said, kind of a backup for general municipal issues. So I've helped with open meeting and public records. Um and with um First Amendment audits, I know there's been questions about uh the status of records with that. Uh as well as Joe was talking about the flag policy and that's from a case, a Shertloff case um that uh. With the city of Boston, that really changed a lot of things for municipalities in terms of of their flag policies, as well as with regard to the. The Barron um the town of Southborough case, which affected uh public participation rules and um. And so that's something that that I work very hard to make sure that the firm is keeping up with all of that and providing you with useful information. We have a number of E updates. That's what we call those on on our website. Uh we make them available to all municipalities and not just our clients. Um. Obviously, they're meant to benefit our clients. Uh they have the, you know, the the best access to us and we're able to follow up. But we also think it's just really important that municipalities have top uh quality legal uh support. And so we're glad to contribute that kind of to the general uh well-being um of the the Commonwealth and its municipalities. Um I also do a significant amount of work with respect to forms of governance. Um I've worked with your attorney committee before and um. And also help write bylaws and deal with that during the town meeting process as well. Worked very closely with with Dennis and uh your your team to um, you know, to make sure that when the warrant gets to the town meeting that and the motions. That any issues have been worked out ahead of time so that you know what you're stepping into and we do as well and are able to provide you with the information you need at town meeting. Um so unless Joe, is there anything else that uh you want to maybe cover?
No. We wanted to make sure we left a couple of times to the board to answer any questions that you may have, both the proposals or. And the services that we provide.
Go ahead. Um I don't I don't really have any questions. I just. Just a just a statement. Um. I've enjoyed, I mean, in the years that I was on the board and and serving on the the charter committee. I worked very closely with Lauren and with Joe and I can say they were very responsive, very helpful, very supportive. Um. And I don't have any questions because I know who you are, you know. The relationship that we had was very business-like, very professional. And it was, you responded when we needed help, you were there to provide guidance. So. That's all I really, I don't have any questions for you because I know enough about your firm. And I really do appreciate you coming back in here and going through this process again.
Yeah, thank you.
I have, I have, I I know in three, but through many, many years.
I was lucky to work with you a couple of years, so I got no questions too. And then. We got everything we need here as well as.
Yeah, we we tried to keep the presentation a little short because we want to repeat too much information for folks that we've been, you know, pretty familiar with. So. Um we know it's at the end of a a long, long night, a long day. So try to speak things a little bit short and sweet, but.
And I I appreciate the fact, actually, you uh. I believe I believe you made a note that you're gonna um honor if we continue to do business together um same agreement, one uh. Those are proposed before.
Yes, of course.
Appreciate it for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm working.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you all have, you know, operated in a in a relatively unique manner with a particular, you know, dollar amount that you do not go above and um, you know, we. We have indicated in the past and we will continue to do that as long as the board uh chooses to approach it that way and keeps us on as town council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And yeah, just just one thing, uh as far as the rate goes, I will say that um increased once over the seven years that. We've got the services. So certainly from a financial perspective, it it's been very good, but um. You know, there's two firms here that I've worked with and they're both great firms and and um. I feel like I've gotten an education from law, so I got the town meeting and uh in particular. Um motions and and articles, et cetera. So I I I do appreciate that. Obviously, I had a great, have had a great working relation with Joe and also. Also, so we don't often have an opportunity to say thank you, but thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
No one has any questions? We know who you are. I know how to get you and I appreciate it for your time. And we had a long day. We had a long day too.
Thank you too.
And um thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And I believe uh that will satisfy our agenda for the evening. Anything else? Am I missing?
Just uh um you you had mentioned in your email about them maybe talking to um the the board members, talking to different department heads about.
Yes, I well, we we I I sent it out in the uh, it might be a good idea. Feel free. I know Tim and Robert here uh if if you'd like, not to. But if you want to give a a call, certainly do that. I I, you know, as far as what type of issues or what type of, you know, experiences that they've had because. The the two of them obviously are very much in in involved with with capital services as is. Uh conservation, we don't have, you know, well. Hannah is it, I I almost feel bad for you and stuff right now, but if the board where Hannah is is leaving.
Yeah, she's leaving.
She is leaving. Okay, so board members were with conservation administrator is leaving. She's gonna stay on on a part-time basis. Uh but certainly you give Hannah a call a as well, but uh as I say, she's here on a very limited basis right now. Kind of uh keeping things afloat until we um have a a uh, you know, another conservation administrator come in. Um certainly Heidi as well. Heidi's involved with with town meeting, finance and Warren. And the the uh warrants that are presented at town meeting. So um feel free and and obviously Hillary as well. So if you have uh any questions about any of the firms, you know, and reach out to me as well. Um so with them, obviously, we're very excited.
So so on the seventh, the the plan is. There's no no more. We're gonna, are we gonna openly discuss them, our opinions? How should we handle this?
I I I think that would make sense. Uh.
So how did I talk about? I think that I I think the whole idea was instead of making a decision. And uh tonight, at least we can digest a little bit. We can communicate who we need to communicate. And then, you know, we can um collectively agree upon. Um whatever we decide. And I think it's um that will give us, what is it, another two weeks? Yeah, to our diligence.
Tonight was the right time to make a decision.
Yeah.
It's a lot of information.
Absolutely. I mean, they they all 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 um. All of them, I mean, they were absolutely fantastic. And it's obviously K P Law, we know, we work with them in the, we have been working with them. And then uh before that, and I I I believe in it, so they got a great reputation, great energy.
Yeah.
And the other two companies, other, they're all great.
It's um. Yeah, there's 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 no surprises with any of them. I mean, I I I I know them all and I I think you can call any of the references there. I tell you that. Good things about them, but um there are a few references that I will call. If I if I, you know, if there is anything else, certainly, I know, but I don't expect. Um that there's much there. And also, we are going to get the information on the fixed fee from that uh person that we'll get that out to you.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
And that will give us the idea and then we we can discuss it on the total seven, what we think. And then, you know, we'll make a decision at that night.
Okay.
I I think that will be the the best solution, yeah?
Yeah.
Any other questions from anybody?
No.
No?
No, I just want to clearly understand what's expected of us. October seventh.
Yeah.
So that's that's one I'm saying going to me.
Yeah, perfect. Anybody else? In that case, then it's um some. We got second. Okay, all my favorites say hi.
Hi.
No boos. And have a great night and thanks for joining us tonight.
Hey, glad to see you're sitting here.
Yeah, me too. As I said, I can't, I'm so thankful.